All right, good evening. I'd like to call the August 11, 2025, meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connelly, but presided over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Marion Blackburn for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. This is very frequently, I have this book that I read from every day, and it just so happens that today's entry actually is, I believe, very suitable for a moment of reflection before we start our meeting. It is from the Buddha, and it says, "May all beings, may beings all live happily and safe, and may their hearts rejoice within themselves. Whatever there may be with breath of life, whether they be frail or very strong, without exception, be they long or short, or middle-sized, or be they big or small, or thick, or visible or invisible, or whether they dwell far or they dwell near, those that are here, those seeking to exist, may all beings rejoice within themselves. Let no one bring about another's ruin, and not despise in any way or place. Let them not wish each other any ill from provocation or from envy." Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connelly?
Here.
Mayor Fortin Daniels, as well as now that she will not be attending this evening. Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Present.
Councilmember Scully?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Mayor Connelly, you have a call.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Manager, any changes?
Any changes, Mayor?
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be a subject of a public hearing conducted this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. Total thirty minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who did register with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted thirty minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted thirty minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Mayor Connelly, we do not have any registered speakers.
All right. Anyone that would like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Crystal, we gotta work on that. As soon as I called for anybody to speak in the public, you came right through that door. You don't want to say anything? Okay, all right. I gave you an opportunity. All right, seen none, we'll close the public comment period, move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one, consent agenda, resolution amending the city Greenville personnel policies. Item number two, resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Pitt County Pitt Area Transit System relating to providing para-transit transportation services within the territorial jurisdiction of the city of Greenville. Item number three, resolution to grant the North Carolina Department of Transportation a permanent utility easement across Homestead Memorial Garden Cemetery. Item number four, resolution accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements for Barrington Fields, Section Three. Item number five, delegation of authority for acquisition of property related to the Fifty and Ten Affordable Housing Project. Item number six, resolution authorizing the police department to apply for a governor's highway safety program grant for traffic safety. Item number seven, resolution authorizing the police department to apply for a governor's highway safety program grant for bike safe regional coordinator. Item number eight, authorization to apply for United States Tennis Association Tennis Venue Services Grant. Item number nine, creation of the city of Greenville Special Projects Charitable Gift Fund. Item number ten, ordinance approving the fiscal year 2025, 2026 Capital Reserve Fund designations. And item number eleven, various tax refunds greater than $100.
All right. Councilmember Willis?
I'd like to pull item number one, please.
All right.
And I'd like to pull items number three and nine.
All right. Save me from pulling one.
I make a motion to approve the remaining agenda items absent one, three, and nine.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Item number one?
Okay, resolution amending the city Greenville personnel policies. Our Director of Human Resources, Leah Futrell, will be available for any questions.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you this evening?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. It's good to see you. I wanted to pull number one because I know there are some good things in there in terms of the technology loans for employees, as well as the loans for the employees, the wellness initiatives, and the change in the leave policy. So I just wanted to get a brief summation of each one of those, just to be able to, in an effort for transparency, just to make sure that we had that out in the open.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. So the first one, the Wellness Equipment Purchase Program, that one is a new program that we are rolling out to employees. It's an effort to continue or further our wellness initiatives, and we recognize that employees, you know, have access to gyms, including the Quyton Fitness Center, but we also recognize that employees may want their own fitness equipment at home. So we've, you know, this program will address that, so that employees are taking the initiative to begin their own wellness journey versus wait until there's a medical issue and then having to address it.
Awesome. So pending approval, how quickly would this program start?
Well, it's actually something we've already rolled out to some employees who've already taken advantage of it.
Okay.
So it's always, so it's been well received, and we hope that it will continue to be received. We wanted to codify it as part of our personnel policies.
Awesome. Very good. I always love preventative measures, measures. So that's great. Awesome. Then the technology piece, there was, there was an opportunity for employees to be able to, is it rent equipment, or to be able to just be more technologically savvy?
That is an existing program, so that's the computer purchase program, I believe, that you're referring to. That's been in existence for a number of years. What we've done is, because it's an additional purchase program, we've essentially aligned the computer purchase and wellness equipment under that one purchase program. So it may look like, may look a little strange, but the computer purchase program has been in existence for a number of years, and it's also very well received by employees.
Awesome. Okay. And then the changes to the leave policies. There was something about vacation leave after a certain amount of time?
Yes. It's, that's just really tweaking the language so that it's clarified, because the language currently uses terminology like can, and we're proposing utilizing language such as shall to make it clear that, you know, this is the, this is the way it would work. So it's really just tweaking up the language so to make it very clear to employees.
Okay. And so, just in my recollection of it, after a certain period of time, your vacation leave will transfer into sick leave, is that correct, after two years?
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's the way it currently works. Employees, after what they can earn in two years, they're allowed to maintain in their vacation accrual. Anything exceeding a two-year accrual automatically transfers to their sick leave balance, where it accrues without limits, which is great, because then that counts toward their creditable service under the North Carolina retirement system. And so, and also, so what we're just doing is just clarifying that language so that at separation, any remaining, which typically is just a few hours, that is also transferred to their sick leave for creditable service purposes.
Right. And like you said, instead of the verbiage saying, "An employee can do this," it will now be, "They shall do this."
That is correct.
Okay. And how will this information be disseminated to employees? How will they learn about this? Is it something that goes out annually, or they learn about it during their evaluations? I just want to make sure, you know, everybody hears it succinctly.
Yeah. So typically, an email goes out to all employees. Also, we maintain an Intranet, and our personnel policy is always available on the Intranet, so any, any city employee can go there and see the most recent version of the city's personnel policies. So via the Intranet, via email, for new employees, obviously during new employee orientation. So it will be lightly disseminated to employees.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Those are all the questions that I have.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept item number one.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we'll move to item number three.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three, resolution to grant the North Carolina Department of Transportation a permanent utility easement across Homestead Memorial Garden Cemetery. Now call forward our Director of Public Works, Kevin Mulligan, to answer any questions.
Good afternoon.
Hey, thanks so much. You know, if it's out there at thirty-three, if it's out there on Thirty-Three East, I'm going to be interested in it.
Absolutely.
I looked at the drawing, but it's an, it's a highly technical drawing. So can you just talk about what this easement, where it is, and what it's going to mean?
Sure. It's a very, very small easement, and it's for utility pole guide wire. So a wire that is supporting the utility pole. The anchor of that will be placed outside of the right-of-way, four feet outside of the right-of-way. So there's the right-of-way to Tenth Street, and then there's the entrance to, and it's twenty-five feet off the entrance to Homestead Cemetery.
Okay.
So technically, it's four feet into the cemetery, but far away, it doesn't impact any graves.
It's just a guide wire?
Just a guide wire.
Okay, all right.
Just the anchor of the guide.
That answers my question, so I'll make, unless somebody else has some questions about it. I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Foreman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero.
All right, moving on to item number nine, creation of the city of Greenville Special Projects Charitable Gift Fund. Now call forward our Executive Director of Recreation and Parks and Capital Projects, Don Ockigan, for answering any questions.
Before Mr. Ockigan starts, I just wanted to let the board know that I was going to pull this one, but Councilmember Blackburn pulled it before it. But I want to disclose that I am a active board member on the Community Foundation of NC East Board, so I'm asking the council if someone will make a motion to recuse me from the vote.
Motion to recuse me, Mayor.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
So I guess, this is, this is all kind of, it's a very new proposal to do this. It was previously, could you just talk about where it is done, rather than me trying to make a match on it?
Yeah, yeah, no problem. In 2021, we created the Wildwood Park Charitable Gift Fund. So what this is doing is taking that gift fund and making it where we can expand it, where it enhances how much, you know, the money that, if someone, a private citizen wanted to donate to a, to Town Common or another park, they can do so. If they wanted to donate to a affordable housing initiative, they can do so for that as well. So this just expands what the city can receive. And then, we manage it the same way we did with Wildwood Park, which has worked great. The funds that are currently in that fund, which is about $12,000, will transfer right into this fund, so pretty seamless process.
And one of the reasons that I wanted to pull it off the consent agenda, too, is to sort of raise the profile for this. I know it's, you know, the city probably is not in the habit of saying, "Do you want to make a charitable bequest?" But this really is that opportunity, especially when I look at our parks, and like it says, "Special Projects." Are we going to have anybody who's going to be in development with this fund, or are we just going to let it continue to operate as it already is?
We'll continue operating like it is, because it has worked very well. But anyone who comes and wants to donate something to the city, for any type of special project, we can use this fund, which is easier for us as a city staff to manage it. Also, when it comes to budget amendments, it's just easier for us to, we've learned a lot with the Wildwood Park Charitable Gift Fund. In fact, this will be something that we will, what we've learned from it will help us in the future.
And I wonder if this is, and maybe this is something for us to talk about long-term, if it would be useful to have a development person to work this fund, especially when I look at our other parks and other park needs, as well as, we have this new, our new Fifty and Ten Affordable Housing Program, like you mentioned, someone who could perhaps recruit contributions to this fund. I don't know.
And we're working very close with Ms. Berryman, too, and her affordable housing initiatives, so I think you'll see that naturally as we continue working through this process.
I would, I would like to believe that we are working in collaboration with our partners in this community more so than probably ever before, whether that be a public or a private, a public entity or a private citizen. And it would be my intention, if you look, look at Wildwood and look at the Fifty and Ten, the Police Gala that we raised money for, there's a lot of opportunity for us to tell our story and to be able to seek assistance in these, these projects. So it will continue to get, to get larger.
Okay, and that's, that's great. I do not doubt that, because I know how outstanding our staff are. I just bring it up because most nonprofits have a, have a specified development person, and wondering if it might benefit us. So thank you for that explanation and description. And with that, I'll make a move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Foreman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we will now move on to, sorry, new business, which is the public hearing. This is the policy for the public hearing adopted by the city council. The petitioner of a, or representative of the petitioner, and a lead are of those in opposition will each have ten minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side of no more than thirty minutes. Additionally, I'll remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and at the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing, as allowed by the mayor, in accordance with adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Mr. Manager, our first and only public hearing for the night?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve, 2025, 2026 Annual Action Plan Public Hearing. I'll now call for our Director of Neighborhood and Business Services, Tiana Berryman, for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so this is a very familiar process to all of you at this point. I'm here tonight to review the Annual Action Plan funding goals for the upcoming year, the current year, actually. The Annual Action Plan is essentially one year of, out of the five-year consolidated plan, where we dictate or anticipate how we will use the funds and hope for certain outcomes. The Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or the CAPR, will be presented in September, and that kind of recaps what we've accomplished over the prior year. All right, this serves as a budget and description of activities. Essentially, it is our application for funds each year. This is year three of five for our current consolidated, and it is an overview of how we anticipate utilizing both community development block grant funds, or CDBG, and our home investment partnership funds. Okay? CDBG funds allow us to participate in a variety of housing activities, public facilities and infrastructure, economic development activities, and public services like our nonprofit grants. And our home partnership funds, largely, it's all things related to homes, right? So rehab, rental development, new construction, and down payment assistance. All right, so our schedule, in the fall, we do, we start with our public meetings just to get some general input around the interests and needs of the community. We had our first public hearing in December, where we anticipated what our, what the document itself would look like. Our nonprofit funding process ran from December to February, and then we had our public comment period on the draft plan. Started in the spring, we had to adjust a little bit because the funding allocations were a little later than usual, but we are happy to have received the, our funding notification. Now we're here for our final public hearing, and we anticipate submitting to HUD in the next week. All right, our top priorities for the upcoming year include new construction, rental development, completion of non-congregate shelter partnership with Community Crossroads, continuing our owner-occupied home rehabilitation program, offering down payment assistance, consistent with the other, the new construction that we have going on in the community, supporting education and nonprofit support, infrastructure improvements as necessary, and acquisition and demolition of substandard structures to make available buildable lots in and around West Greenville, in line with our Fifty and Ten. Okay? So here's an overview of the budget. If you can, if you take a look at the bottom there, the total CDBG funding amount that we're receiving is a little over $850,000. Home funds, we're looking at just, just shy of half a million dollars, both a little less than we're typically used to receiving. So we've had some shifts in how our budget is, how our budget has been aligned in the past couple of years. Ultimately, we've got requirements when it, as it relates to planning and administration. Twenty percent of CDBG can go toward planning and admin, and ten percent of home funds. We don't have any budget from either of these funding sources for new construction, but thankfully, because of the Fifty and Ten, we've been able to supplement that. So we don't plan on losing, well, in fact, we plan on doing more this year, even though we don't have any CDBG or home funds available for this activity. Infrastructure improvements, we've got a $50,000 commitment that's available. Housing rehab, $460,000 or so for, out of CDBG. Acquisition and demolition, about $45,000. Again, something to keep in the pocket, but we do have funds available through our Fifty and Ten budget that are, will supplement any additional needs. Our down payment assistance will allow for up to a little over $100,000. Our CHODO program, which is our community housing development organization partnership, essentially a nonprofit developer partner that comes along for new construction purposes. We are required to have a set aside for CHODO, so we do have $71,000. Rental development, we have $250,000 available, and public services for our nonprofit grants, a little under $130,000. So staff recommends city council holding a public hearing and approve the 2025, 26 Annual Action Plan for submission to HUD this, this week, actually.
So there's no, no rush, or like, no panic to get it done, or anything, right?
No.
Gotcha.
I just want to make a comment, Mayor. I commend you, Ms. Berryman, and your team, and Michael, your staff, for doing more with less.
Thank you.
Because that was notable, that you are doing more with less. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Look at me, or you're standing. You know how I feel.
I do.
And the efforts being made to increase opportunities for homeownership rather than perpetual renting is greatly appreciated, and Michael has thought, you know. You guys have done an excellent job with that, and I'm excited about where we're going within, like, literally.
I said, I said, that was a perfect opportunity. You could have gone like that.
But we're, we're making strides. There's still so much further to go. I won't even start with the stories of what we're experiencing with the increase of housing insecurity in our community. So it, even though it's a drop in the bucket, it, it means that at least our hearts are in the right place, and we know we need to make it a priority.
Absolutely. Thank you for your support.
Public hearing's now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes. I bet everybody's waiting to speak in opposition. All right, seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Public hearing's now closed. Up for a board discussion or a motion?
To approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. Hey, we made it. We got it done. Good work. All right, move on to other items of business. Mr. Manager?
All right.
Lucky number thirteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number thirteen, ordinance amending city code, Section 12-1-2, to allow the sale, service, possession, and consumption of malt beverages and unfortified wine upon designated portions of the Shepherd Memorial Library, and other clarifications to ordinance. I'll now call forward our Assistant City Attorney, Donald Phillips.
You got our attention.
Everybody loves to have a drink at the, if legal or not, they love to have a drink at the library, right?
Lucky thirteen. Getting mayor, members of council, I'm joined tonight by Ronan Leary, Director of Libraries, and the city attorney's office was approached by the Shepherd Memorial Library to see if there could be a, to facilitate, to revise the existing city code, which is 12-1-2 subsection D, to allow the sale, service, possession, and consumption of malt beverages and unfortified wine upon designated portions of Shepherd Memorial Library, consistent with defined portions of other city property. What that essentially means is allowing Shepherd Memorial Library at designated events that are approved by the Board of Trustees of Shepherd Memorial Library to have a special event. Keeping in mind, of course, that Shepherd Memorial Library, the building is owned by the city, and so we would have the, in order for the library to be able to hold an event, it would have to get permission from city council to write this ordinance in. And essentially, while we were here in surgery, make other necessary clarifications to the existing ordinance, and there were a couple of, just minor clarifications to that ordinance that we wanted to bring forth. We recommend approval. We're here for, answer any questions. This request primarily was from the friends of the library to hold a fundraising event, and it's just malt beverages and unfortified wine, not spirit of liquor, so.
All right. Any questions?
Questions.
Councilmember Blackburn.
So I actually would have thought this was already allowed. I'm surprised it wasn't already allowed. This is not allowed because the city owns the building, is that what it is, the city bar?
Correct.
Not included in the ordinance.
And, and the General Assembly gives permission to the city to, by ordinance, regulate unfortified wine and malt beverages. And so you have to have the ordinance in order to do that. And it just is, it adds to the list those other facilities, those city facilities, where you have already given that approval.
Boy, we play by the rules in this city.
Hey, so somebody might want to go back and check the footage. Councilmember Blackburn might have been walking out with a glass of wine.
Well, actually, I'm a completely sober person, so that did not happen. But it's possible that perhaps someone else did. Yeah, no, that's, that was my, my only question. We do play by the rules.
All right, any other questions, comments, motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Legal drinking.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I'm moving right along. Item number fourteen, ordinance to amend the manual fees, update fire and rescue fees. I'll call for our Chief Financial Officer, Jacob Joyner, for a quick presentation.
Did we, did we get, like, the air turned down when you?
It is cold there.
Thank you. This is a ordinance to amend manual fees related to the fire protection service fees in the, particularly in the industrial service park. Currently, the fee reads as follows. The form is hereby established to determine the extra to, extraterritorial fire protection fee each fiscal year, which equals the total property value divided by 100 multiplied by 10% equals the building amount, and in no event shall the annual costs under the agreement exceed $50,000. The proposed fee change reads the exact same, except removes the final part of the cap of $50,000. This is largely due to the Fire Department achieving Tier One status in regards to insurance, and what that also kind of comes with is additional cost on the Fire Department. And this is serving the industrial park, we're seeing continued growth. And this is serving the industrial park, we're seeing continued growth in that area as we get larger businesses out there. And we just ask that council approve the changes to the manual fees.
All right, any questions, comments, motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Item number fifteen, contract award for professional services for the joint city and GUC employee classification and compensation study. Now call forward our Director of Human Resources, Leah Trell, for the presentation.
Okay. Good evening once again. I have a short presentation. Before we start, though, I just do want to say as a reminder, this study was unanimously approved by city council and the GUC commissioners at its joint meeting on April fourteenth of this year. Okay? So as far as funding, council approved funding for the study in this current budget for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, for a total fixed fee of up to three hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. Since this is a joint study, half would be paid by the city, up to one seventy seven five, with half paid by GUC also, up to that same amount. About the study, just a little bit, many years ago, the council and the GUC commissioners agreed that a study of this magnitude should be done in ten year intervals. So that's what we've tried to do, to ensure that employees are in the correct classification for the kind of work that they're performing, and also to ensure to the extent possible that the pay plan is competitive as compared to the external marketplace. Prior joint studies are shown here, fiscal year two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten. And then we, in keeping with that ten year cycle, fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we began a study. But I think we all know what happened around that time. COVID nineteen became a thing and it just put, you know, just threw the market into all sorts of conditions that we were uncertain about. So the decision was made to eventually cancel that study, so we did not proceed with that full comprehensive study. Instead, we, council and the GUC commissioners approved a true up market study that took place in twenty twenty two to ensure that we didn't veer too far off since it had been a significant amount of time since we had, had the comprehensive study back in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten. So clearly, this study is, we're basically catching up to a point where we really need to be because we've gotten really off course due to no fault of our, of our own, it's really due to COVID. So the city and GUC issued an RFP for qualified consulting firms, we issued that back in June eighteen, on June eighteenth. Fourteen, fourteen proposals were received, three firms were selected for on-site presentations. Segal was unanimously chosen by the selection committee due to its specialized expertise in classification and compensation analysis and design. A little bit about Segal, you all are probably familiar with that name, particularly council members who've been on the, on the council for a little bit. But really, the, the reasons are, are a multitude of reasons that we selected or the selection committee chose Segal to conduct the study. First of all, they have over eighty-five years of related experience, including pretty extensive public sector experience with municipalities and utilities. They're a national consulting firm, again, with specialized expertise in class and comp analysis and design. And, you know, last but certainly not least, their prior experience partner, partnering with the city and GUC. So they already know a lot about our classification plan, our market, our peer organizations, those types of things. This slide presents a big picture overview, overview of the timeline for the study. As you can see, the timeline is pretty aggressive, but we need it to be that way for, you know, so that we can meet the budget deadlines, but without sacrificing quality of the study. So the plan is for the project to kick off this month, from August twenty twenty five through January twenty twenty six, that's where all the really heavy lifting will occur with regard to classification analysis, salary market assessment, and recommendations development. This is also the period of time where employees will be heavily involved, and the consultant as well as staff from both the city and GUC will be ensuring that employees understand the, the concept of the study and have an opportunity to, to, to be heard. So during that five to six month period, again, that's where the bulk of the time will be spent. In Janu, towards the end of January, Segal will present final recommendations to city and GUC staff, and of course, then the recommendation will be presented to the Joint Pay and Benefits Committee in twenty twenty six, and finally to, to city council and the GUC commissioners in twenty twenty six for your review and approval. So the recommendation is that city council approve and award a professional services contract for the joint city and GUC employee classification and compensation study. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Willis?
Ms. Trell, what kind of feedback are you looking for from employees in this process?
Well, they will, each employee will be asked to complete a questionnaire to fully detail their job tasks. And some employees, we're going to have a representation of, of all job families and pay grades throughout the city so that the, so that staff and the consultant can meet with samplings of employees to under, to better understand their jobs. And if, you know, if the employees have questions about the, the approach of the study, just to, you know, ensure that any concerns are fully understood and answered to the extent that we can answer them.
And will every employee have an opportunity to contribute, or are there certain departments or certain individuals within departments will be able to give feedback?
So every employee, full-time employee, will be afforded the opportunity to complete a questionnaire.
Okay.
And obviously because we have so many hundreds of employees, not everyone would, would be able to be a part of what we call focus groups, but everyone would be a part of the meetings to understand so that staff and the consultant explains the process, and then a sampling of employees probably would be invited back to have specific questions directed to them, particularly for positions that are, that we found to be difficult to field or where we've had a lot of turnover.
Right.
Things of that nature.
Awesome, okay. I'm just thinking back to some conversations we've had in the past about our public works department and trying to make sure that they, to make sure that we're looking at those salaries, and so I'm anticipating that as these findings come out at the beginning of the year, we will be able to incorporate those and consider those in the budget process for next year and be able to make some, some decisions.
Matter of fact, I was going to make that point, you stole the thunder, that during the planning session last year, the conversation was on, start out on public safety, in that, you know, we want to have, we want to make sure that we got the strongest, best in the world, fire rescue as well as police department, and make sure that we're looking at the, the market and we're, 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 we're well competitive with the market. But at that meeting on that Saturday, it also came up that we need to be looking at solid waste, we need to be looking at our streets division, we need to be looking across the public works. And honestly, that's where, when Leah and I got back together and approached GUC and Mr. Cannon about the fact that we never finished, we never even was, were able to complete the ten years study back in two thousand and twenty, twenty twenty and twenty one. So this is to catch up, but it really spurred from the conversation that we had at the planning session related to public safety as well as public works.
Awesome, awesome, good, thank you.
Welcome.
I just want to say I greatly appreciate that as it relates to public works, because that, that was a huge concern, and I really appreciate it.
But I don't want to single those out, though.
I mean, I don't want to sink it.
Not you, but me, I want to make sure that I get loads in my pockets.
But that was one, that was one, that was the department that I elevated. All of our departments are important, and of course, you know, we talked about the fire department and everything, but public works often kind of gets pushed to the back burner or something, and I just appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Willis.
I've got one question.
All those, I'm sorry, you got a question?
One quick question. I'm sorry, Leah, this, is this, is this a rushed timescape, timeframe?
Um, I wouldn't characterize it as rushed, I would characterize, characterize it as aggressive, and, and that's part of the reason that Segal was, was selected, is because they have the, the human resources, the staff, to dedicate to this project.
It's a huge project.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's just as important in that not only does Segal have the, the experience with local government such as ourselves, but even probably more importantly, they have the experience in the utilities, and that's what's going to allow us to, to stay on task so that we don't have to go back and try to find benchmarks within utility companies similar to our makeup that have all the four, the gas, the water, the sewer, and the electric.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion's been made, probably second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
In the moment that I've been waiting for all night, I want to hear the city manager read the next item.
The budget.
Take a deep breath on this one. All right, item number, thank you, Mayor. Item number sixteen, budget ordinance amendment number one, amending the two thousand twenty five, twenty six city of Greenville budget ordinance number twenty five dash zero two zero, facility improvements fund ordinance number twenty five dash zero two zero, housing fund ordinance number twenty four dash zero three eight, affordable housing fund ordinance number twenty four dash zero three eight, recreation and parks capital project fund ordinance number seventeen dash zero two four, public works capital project fund ordinance number seventeen dash zero two four, engineering capital projects fund ordinance number twenty dash zero one nine, special revenue grant fund ordinance number eleven dash zero zero three, and community development capital projects fund ordinance number seventeen dash zero two four. Now call forward our Chief Financial Officer, Jacob Joyner, for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Budget ordinance amendment number one for fiscal year twenty twenty six, this is impacting the operating fund, facility improvement fund, recreation parks capital project fund, the housing fund, the affordable housing fund, public works capital project fund, community development capital project fund, and the special revenue grant fund. Item A is just reallocating operating funds from recreation parks to department to the project management fund, this has no budgetary impact to the general fund. Item B will be appropriating fiscal year twenty six capital funds for the streetlights and cameras project, this increases the public works capital project fund three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Item C is appropriating fiscal year twenty six capital fund from payment management program, this will increase the engineering capital fund by three point one million dollars. Item D will be transfer remaining capital fund from the recreation capital, capital fund to facility improvement, this will be no change to recreation capital fund and increase the facility improvement fund by twenty two thousand nine hundred seventy eight. Item E will be appropriating revenue received for the operation of the shop spotter system, this will increase the special revenue grant fund by a hundred and forty five thousand dollars. Item F is to appropriate fiscal year twenty six capital funds for affordable housing initiatives, this will increase the affordable housing fund by four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Item G will be recognizing the fiscal year twenty six grant award for CDBG and home programs, this will increase the housing fund by one point seven million. Item H, appropriating revenue received for energy efficiency program, this will increase the community development capital fund by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And item A will be to increase police full-time employees by half a position, and that will result in no change to the general fund. That brings the overall operating budget to a hundred and eighty seven point nine million dollars, and we ask that council approve budget ordinance amendment number one.
Any questions, comments, motions?
To approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Willis, anybody want to hear the city manager read that one more time?
No, please.
Seen none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we'll move on to the review of the August fourteenth, two thousand twenty five city council agenda. Mr. Manager?
I'll ask, did that be put on the screen so we can take a few seconds to review that agenda?
Yeah, that's teamwork right there, I knew you were tired of reading, so I read that for you.
Thank you.
End of the reading of the thirsty agenda.
All right.
Good, all right, we'll see, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
So, um, this is a shout out.
You got your megaphone?
I don't, I don't, because I tell you what, I, I was, it was, this was a tough one because I could not put everybody's picture on a screen that I wanted to recognize, and I knew I would miss somebody and leave somebody out. Because we just finished week of the Little League Softball World Series right here in Greenville, where we got to show off to the whole entire country just how special of a community we have. And it was beautiful on the screen, and it was beautiful in person. And the num, the countless number of, of comments, compliments that we received from people all over the place, I, we actually had one family from Los Angeles said that this was just the best community in the world, and we actually had somebody from, a, a family from Royal Beach drive all the way to Greenville to, to watch the day of the tournament. But as, as special as that is, it could never have happened without the greatest employees in the whole entire world. The city of Greenville behind the scenes and our employees and the collaboration with Greenville Little League and the CDD just knocked it out of the park, no pun intended. And just to put that in perspective, in addition to, to the, the day-to-day activities that they have and responsibilities that they have, just in the last five months, what the staff of this city has been able to pull off is North Carolina League of Municipalities State Conference, Pirates Fest, where we have expanded that, that Pirates Fest, it was the best year that we've, we've ever had, Juneteenth, July Fourth Celebration, and then to follow up that with the Little League Softball World Series, and then we'll get ready to go into the fall with Free Boot Fridays and the festivals and on into the, the holiday season. And I just cannot say enough about how fortunate that we are as a city to have the individuals that we have that are working behind the scenes to do this, not only for the benefit of themselves, but for the benefit of everybody in our community and everybody who visits our community. And I just give a big old shout out to every single employee that was, took a part in this, great job, exceptional job.
Yeah.
Mayor Saul.
Wonderful, 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 wonderful. Let's start with Councilmember Foreman.
Over the last several weeks, there's been a lot going on in our community, and we have, you know, we had a week where we had four shootings and three deaths. And I just want to elevate that over the last several years, long before I was on council, I stood on the other side over there talking about some of the root issues and things that we have in our community, with housing and food insecurity, and a significant portion of our community just struggling. And just want to elevate that as I've observed and listened to a lot of the responses as it relates to this, that desperation oftentimes breeds crime. And just want us to be mindful, want to say thank you again to the city because we are, we have made over the last year housing a priority. And there are a lot of cuts going on right now that are taking away services and resources. We've got new companies coming into our community and bringing in jobs, but we need to make sure that the people in our community that need jobs the most are getting those jobs. We're making strides, but we've got a lot of work to do. That's something that's very close to my heart. Um that's something that's very close to my heart and um don't wanna talk about it too much because my, I can feel my voice shaking already. But um let's just keep in mind that we have a responsibility to serve those that are most in need. And to put the best, our best foot forward to give our youth opportunities for extracurricular activities and options for a future. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Blackburn?
I want to continue um what Councilmember Foreman has begun. Um I'd like us all to take a moment to reflect on that violence. And I want to say the names of the victims, Emiliano Gutierrez Bobial, he was thirteen, Kiari Cunningham was seventeen, Kellen Dwayne Williams was forty-two, and they all died within just a few days of each other as a result of gun violence. This year, our city has experienced thirteen killings. It's even harder to accept that five of those victims were under twenty years old. And I would like for us all as a community to take time, not just now in the face of the violence, but every single day to reflect on a positive response to those tragic events. Um our community and these families especially are grieving. And our police, commend our police for their investigations and arrests, but this is not a police matter, this is a community matter. For us as council members, it's also time to look at this as an issue to see what role we can play in having a positive response. Whether that means more summer programs, more activities, and more public events that bring us together. And individually, we can all listen to our brothers and sisters, our friends and our neighbors and our colleagues. And when we sense something wrong, to try to be a part of the change we wish to see in the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Willis?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um I wanted to um make reference to um a great addition to our employees in that um one of the things that I advocated for recently was that we be able to extend the mental health access to our employees through our city clinic. And there was one um individual there providing services, and now we are increasing that to two so that our employees will be able to have um the that access. And that is incredibly, um I was delighted to hear that because to be able to go and receive mental health counseling for free um at the city health clinic is invaluable. And then to be able to have more availability to do that, I really hope that our employees uh take advantage of that. Um also, congratulations to the Little League World Series, um ladies, the home team, the North Carolina team. I know that they may not have gotten as far as they wanted to get, but they create, they played incredibly well and they represented our city and our area very well. So congratulations to them for as far as they were able to make it. Um as well as our PAL um summer camp through the Police Athletic League and our police department. They finished up their summer camp um just recently, had a phenomenal summer. And when we talk about how we can address some of the issues that Councilmember Foreman and Councilmember Blackburn brought up, that is one of those impactful uh programs that gave our young people something to do um this summer and such a positive environment. And um it's programs like that that will help us to address some of the the issues that we're seeing um in our community. So congratulations to them for having a um wonderful outcome and uh being able to impact the lives of so many of our um young people in our community. That's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scully?
Thanks, Mayor. Um I'd like to remember Mayor Pretend Monica Daniels' family. After she lost her sister Nora Parker, they celebrated um Nora Parker's life today. Um so I'd like to lift um Monica Daniels in prayer and her family, um God bless them with peace uh during this time. Uh I'd also like to thank our wonderful staff for the awesome softball experience that we all got to enjoy. Um I got to go out only one game, wish I'd gotten to go some more, but it was so cool. Um got to see our girls win, um and just to experience the the thrill of the place, so well organized, beautiful, and welcoming. Uh just such a really great example of of our city. Um and to be displayed for the whole world to see is just so cool. So thank you very much um to the whole city staff for for putting that on. Um and I continue to um shout-out for our businesses downtown. Um construction continues. Uh thank you so much to everyone who worked on the build grant uh project on Fifth Street. It really looks wonderful. Uh it's almost finished, got one more intersection um to do and a little bit of cleanup work. Um but it's really looking great. It's a huge improvement uh to the look of our city, but also to the infrastructure underground, uh just a huge improvement. Um I hope everybody really appreciates what that means for our city. And uh please continue to support all the businesses on Dickinson. Um it's a difficult place to get to in some respects right now. Um that's really only perception. Uh it's just a few more turns to get around and to get down there and support those those businesses who really need us. Um we really need for our downtown to be vibrant and successful, and there's some really, really quality businesses down there who who need your support. Um and I'm not just saying that, it it's hard to to make money running a restaurant or um running a kinda retail business in a downtown environment. It's really difficult. Um if you want that to continue, please, please go over there and support those operators, um support that area. Um and I think that's all I've got for tonight. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I I can only echo about what's going on in our community, about the violence and stuff. And I I know personally from being, you know, raised in this community that the programs, after-school programs, the Boys and Girls Club, the sports programs, the various other arts programs that we have are saving our youth. And because they are being courted so heavily by the gangs and the gangs live by violence. And so the more we can do to try and help our children with that, because I mean, you know, thirteen-year-old child shoots another thirteen-year-old child over a necklace. Or or it it's just incomprehensible what's going on. So the programs are excellent and and youth sports complex are 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 part of that puzzle. But some of the things we can do to try and lift our youth up and give them positive role models in our community, I I know this council's working on that. And I look forward to working with it again. And in that kind of vein, I wanna say this, the Jackie Robinson Baseball League, y'all guys know I'm all about sports. Uh they've had a good year. So Friday, thank you, city council and all the staff, they have their pool that's gonna be uh free of charge to them, and they're gonna celebrate with a pool party.
Yes, ma'am.
And they're gonna have cone of ice out there and all the kids are gonna have fun. I think there's about a hundred and eighty kids that are in the Jackie Robinson Baseball League, and uh Norm and I have spoken about that. We got some things going on with them. And then the big party, the end-of-year party, is on Sunday, so if you guys can go out and make it. That's gonna be the one with all the parents and the food trucks and a hundred and eighty kids, and so we've got some things going on with that. And uh I would encourage everybody watching this and those on council, you know, the Jackie Robinson Baseball League i- is 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 still going on and getting developed. Norm and I are gonna meet in February and try and ramp it up to even bigger level to get more sponsors, get more kids off the street and playing ball, and just have an overall good time. So if anybody can come out and see Friday uh at the pool party and just kinda stop by and just say hello to these kids, it would mean a lot to them. And if you've got time on Sunday to come out and enjoy some food trucks with us and stuff like that, that would be awesome. Um next, the the Little League uh Softball World Series. I I can't even echo loud enough what our city has done from every member, including the volunteers that have put this on. I mean, we are on a world stage. I mean, we take that for granted because it's like, we can go see it in our backyard. But we're on a world stage. I talked to a lot of the the coaches and players from Sao Paulo, Brazil, Japan. I mean, just amazing that they came all the way from those places to play in Greenville, North Carolina. And so uh everything ran like a well-oiled machine. I mean, we brought a family with us because they they do the travel ball stuff and they travel about forty-two weeks a year. So they've been up and down the East Coast, New Orleans, Florida, all the way up to New Jersey. They've been in Texas, and they have seen the best of the best, and they were all raving about how the city put this on and how well a program it was run. Some professional softball players came in here and watched our event and again raved about it. This is not just this year, it's every single year. So um we should be extremely proud of that and all the hard work. It looks easy, but thousands of hours have gone in. And I know our staff twenty-four-seven call literally, I know to 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 Valerie, you know, I'm calling you six, seven o'clock trying to get tickets and stuff like that. So accolades to all, all the people who put that on, especially to the young girls who who dedicated. And uh they came up short, but look, they've been playing every, what, for the last four years, I believe, they came in fourth. And so those young ladies should be super proud of their efforts because again, this is the World Series. Um kind of with the sports thing also, while that tournament's going on in our city and county, also the Sarah Lee had a a tournament going on which brought more people in into our community from, I talked to a family from Roxburgh. I thought they were in the World Series, but they're at the Sarah Lee. So congratulations to, sorry?
Sarah Law, Sarah Lee's bread.
What did I say?
Sarah Lee.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think about the the muffin one. Sarah Law, let me get it all right, I apologize, guys. Um and then I I know in 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 one regard, we kinda go, ah, but in other regard, welcome back to all the ECU students who get ready to come in. We're getting about twenty-eight thousand students to come in here and and they're gonna spend money in our community. And I know sometimes that can be a little difficult, but what I'm asking our community to do, be a little more patient because the parents coming down here, they're kinda idle because they're bringing their freshmen for the first time. So you're gonna have a lot of traffic, try, anybody be a little bit more patient and and don't get mad because they're holding up traffic and blocking things up. And welcoming, welcoming those students back to our city and for the new families to our city, uh because it's a great place to be. Finally, today, to Mayor Pretend Daniels, went to her service and what a wonderful service and celebration of life it was for Nora. I mean, it was just, it was really good and what a wonderful family. And, you know, we're sad to see someone go, but I know the legacy that Nora left behind, she's gotta be super proud of the family. She's still seeing down here. And so uh, you know, when we lose somebody, I wish we could say words to take it all away, take the pain, the anxiety, the discomfort, just to just the pure sadness away, but we can't. But what we can do is surround the family with love and our prayers and go by and visit with them because although the funeral and celebration of life was today, the hardest times are yet to come because the holidays had come up for the first time, those things. So continue to lift uh Mayor Pretend Daniels and her family, extended family and friends and relatives. Please keep them in your thoughts and prayers and and make sure you just go check up on them because a lot of times somebody, you know, it might be November Thanksgiving and it's long since passing of the celebration of life, but all of a sudden they're having a tough day. So please remember that family in there. And again, I thought it was a wonderful celebration. I'm like, uh with glad my wife and I could be a part of it. And so with that, I think that's it, Mayor. Thank you for letting me talk so long.
Anytime, anytime.
Thank you. Well, I've got some more to say for you, but I'm just.
Hey, it's it's seven oh nine right now.
Roll.
That clock's wrong. Um I too wanna echo uh sentiment to uh Mayor Pretend Daniels and her family as she lost her sister. Everybody here, I think, probably could say that they've lost a family member, um probably in the near or recent fut- or recent past. And we all know how difficult it is to lose a close family member, so please keep her in your prayers. Um I also wanna say thank you to our city staff for the hard work that they put in. Um it is a big monumental task for us to put on the Little League Softball World Series, and it wouldn't be possible without our staff. Also, it wouldn't be possible with our great partners, one of which was ECU. Um ECU's an incredible partner, uh that helped run that, uh that provided the the dorms for all the girls to stay in. Um I was told that the DoorDash drivers made a killing uh with all those girls calling DoorDash, get food, because they could not leave the uh the dorms when they were there. So uh thank you to ECU for a partner, but you know, most importantly, I wanna say thank you to Little League International uh for giving Greenville, North Carolina, an opportunity to host such an amazing event. Um it's great for me personally because I love softball. Uh I've got two little girls that play softball. But I think from a community standpoint, it's great to be able to welcome people in, and it's awesome for me to walk through that ballpark and listen and talk to people that recognize me from the opening ceremony and say, thank you so much for putting on this event. This is amazing. This is one of the best experiences we've ever had. Um so that was really cool. You know, to be able to have people come in our community and say that it's great. To have somebody from Los Angeles, California, say that our our community is, what, the best community ever, something like that? And that's, that's pretty neat. They're coming from a pretty uh metro area uh down there in in Southern California. So um I'm really, I'm really thankful for everybody's participation. It took a monumental, uh it was a monumental task for for us to be able to put that on. But without the great partnerships that we have, uh it wouldn't have been possible. So thank you to everybody that was a part of that. Um second of all, I would also say um we talk about the violence that's taking place in our in our community. It's terrible. Um I think we all sit up here and agree and talk about it. A great way is to get involved in youth's lives. I mean, I I will say that me personally, one of the things that I've found has been the one of the most gratifying things for me to do is to be able to coach young girls softball. If you would've asked me twenty years ago if I was coaching young girls girls play softball, I would say there's no way in the world that I would do something like that. And it is probably one of the most gratifying things that I've done. Um I get to go ahead and teach the girls a sport that I was able to play, uh of course, with a smaller white ball, not a larger yellow ball that they use, but it's the same concept. But it has been incredibly gratifying, and it's neat to be able to look out and see twelve, thirteen, fourteen girls out there teaching them the game and knowing that they're going to learn things other than just the sport out there. They're gonna learn how to deal with things throughout their life. Because many of those girls that I'm that I'm coaching right now are not gonna be playing professional softball. A lot of them aren't gonna be playing college softball, but hopefully some of those skills that they're learning there as far as team-building skills or, you know, just going through stressful situations and figuring out how to get through it will help them somewhere along in their professional career as they get older. So a great way to get involved in the community is go out there and coach, be a mentor. It doesn't have to be sports, it can be anything. Uh but getting involved in children's lives makes a huge difference, and I think that will help out with some of the crime issues that we're seeing in our community. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve, or I mean to to go to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion's made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed say nay?
Motion passes five zero.